To everybody to their second June council meeting that we've held. And the start of full councils again, it's great to see everybody. If not in the flesh on the screen and I welcome you all to the meeting. It has been quite a trying time for some of us and I do hope that we'll take part. Apologies for absence, we've got councillor McDonald and councillor Boyd, councillor Macmillan Douglas or are there any others? Okay, the apologies are just to remind you of the councillor's code of conduct. And any declarations, please make them to the legal and admin department as soon as possible. Back to go on to the motion we have before us, recovery and resilience, education, current and indicative costs. Members will be aware that the report was not in the public domain for the required three clear days before the meeting. Sure you're all aware of that. And as promised, I have determined that the matter can be considered at this meeting as a matter of urgency. By reason of special circumstances, as revised funding arrangements must be in place before the start of the school term 2020-2021. Now, before I introduce the report, I've got to ask Mrs Jackie McCannan, head of legal and democratic services, if she would advise members on the terms of the six months rule. Mrs McCannan.
Thank you, Provost. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Members will note that recommendations viewed the report includes a proposal to amend the purpose of the £926,000 funding approved by special arrangements committee on the 23rd of June this year. And this was to extend, so this is to extend the temporary contracts for teachers and support staff. So therefore the whole school year. As the report provides, well, this is an alternation to a decision made within the last six months because it was made just last month. There has been a material change in circumstance arising from the deputy first minister's announcement of 23rd of June, which was to ensure that the probation teachers can secure teaching posts for the whole of the next school year. So in terms of standing order 26 to Provost, are you satisfied that there has been a material change in circumstances? So that it's appropriate for the issue to be reconsidered?
Thank you, Mrs McCannan. Having heard your information there, I am satisfied that there has been a material change of circumstances. And so accordingly, I will. Councillor Wan, would you like to present the motion for movement? Reminded you've got five minutes.
Thank you very much, Provost. Welcome back, everybody. I would just like to commend this paper to you on the finding the route back to school, the recovery resilience, education, current and costs. We are asked today to authorise a range of measures aimed at fulfilling the Scottish government's call for a return of full-time schooling for all children and young people in August. Can't believe it was 24th of March that we closed the schools. Seems they're just flown past or some anyway. I would like to thank Kelly McIntosh, director of education and our team for their efforts and what this has. And it's not an easy task and made harder by the constant change that we have been given in guidance. Something I did write to Mr Swinney asking if we could get a bit more clearer guidance and a bit more updated, rather than just straight out to the press, it comes to the local authorities through COSLA first. But the job our team have done to this day has been amazing. This morning, just to let you know, the Scottish government published an advisory note on physical distancing in schools and an advisory note on school transport. Whilst officers have not been able to fully review the contents of these advisory notes, the key messages from the note on school transport are: One, dedicated school transport should be regarded as an extension of the school estate and the physical distancing measures between the pupils are not necessary, subject to continued low levels of infection within Scotland. We recognise that the school transport will involve mixed age groups of pupils, but still consider the risk of transmission to be acceptably low when mitigations are in place. Two, in line with the advice on physical distancing, this advice would apply to all school age children travelling on dedicated school transport. Thirdly, as a primarily preventive measure, we would advise against schools sharing school buses if possible at this time. Our team will now begin to plan for a return to use of transport with no physical distances in place, albeit with individual arrangements for children with additional support needs who require the support of an adult during transport. It is thought that this may incur some additional expenditure, however, the amount is unknown at this time. And a further report will be provided to committee as part of the revised budget in September if required. Basically, what we're saying today is we don't really need to consider the £870,000 school transport cost because of this new guidance that came out this morning. So I would just like to quickly go over a couple of the points that we've got in our paper. First of all, digital inclusion. And I'm pleased to say we have accepted a grant of the £517,000, which will enable this council to purchase laptops, tablets and wifi facilities for our young people to utilise from home or at school. This is ensuring that no one is left behind in the learning path. This will allow Angus council to offer a range of learning locations and ensures that a young can access work from anywhere. The free school meals provision, this was agreed at our last SAC last month and one that has been appreciated by many families in Angus. And we can now claim the grant of £227,000. The additional staffing, as mentioned with Jackie there earlier, it was agreed at a previous SAC that we would employ 40 new members of staff on a six month contract. We are asking you today that we extend this for the whole teaching year after the announcement by the DFM that all contracts should be for at least the teaching year. It is anticipated that the government will fund this from the £100 million promised to local authorities, however, it is unclear at this time the exact amount Angus council will receive. Support for children and young people, there is a growing evidence that we will see an upturn in referrals to children's social work services as a result of their experiences during COVID-19. And as such, it has been identified that we need, there is a need for increased collaboration between school staff and social work colleagues. We are asked today to carry forward the amount of £200,000 in order to employ four social workers. A decision I feel is a must to ensure we can assist as many young people as possible. And I can only see this requiring to increase in the years to come. And I have already asked COSLA to ensure Angus council views are known to the Scottish government and that this needs to be looked at extremely seriously. School transport, I've touched on. The clearing of schools, potential increase in costs arising from the provision of cleaning facilities, management and catering services, which I have been discussing with the director of education and our team for weeks now. And I'm surprised that TESI contracts are yet to give us these costs. My ask today is that TESI contracts provide us with costs now as we cannot budget and scrutinise if we are presented with these last minute. I've also asked a deputy leader and member of the TC committee to chase this up, as it hasn't come through yet. In essence, today's asks are not negotiable as we are required to implement them. I would however, ask all my colleagues here today, one, to support them and agree these measures and spends. And two, use any influence on our colleagues in Holyrood to ensure that Angus council are funded to cover this additional expense. I commend their support to you today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Wan. You've gone a heck of a lot of detail out there in less than five minutes. Well done. Second, councillor Speed. Councillor Speed.
I think that, is that me off now?
Yes, actually.
I hope that doesn't eat into my minutes. And thank you, Provost. I second. And as vice convenor of children and learning and spokesperson for social care, I'm glad to be at liberty to speak again and be back to full council. Thanks must go to Kelly McIntosh, Catherine Lindsay and other teams who have had the exceptionally hard task of working through COVID-19 and often a very turbulent and uncertain environment. This report very clearly articulates the areas of our education and social work system that need additional resources and that will need to flex and change in order to be able to work safely and effectively, while supporting all our children and families to return to school and within their local communities. It is particularly reassuring that we are increasing our staffing resources within education and our children, families and criminal justice teams. As I believe, as I'm sure you do, that human contact, albeit distancing and professional support will be needed in the days and weeks, months and even years ahead. What concerns me greatly, Provost, is the unknown impact. As we know, many of our children and families have been left absolutely devastated. Many traumatised due to the fear, social isolation, loss of jobs and income, as well as an increase in care and demands that will have left many exhausted and on their knees. All of our mental health will likely have been challenged in some way. We may all have been in the same storm, but yet many will have been in very different boats. Of course, it's the summer holidays and although we may be enjoyable for some, for many, the challenges and hardships will continue. For those that have been most affected and who are living in crisis, it suffocates and many will have lost their voice during this time. I anticipate, like councillor Wan has already described, that we may be back here again looking to increase our resources. And although that we do need to be prudent with our finances, our health and wellbeing of our children and families must remain our top priority throughout recovery and beyond. To finish, I would encourage anyone who may not be joining us in this meeting, but may see kind of YouTube clips later on, I would encourage anyone to reach out. And before I hand over to other colleagues who may wish to speak, what I would like to say is that for those who are struggling, when they do reach out that hand, they don't care what colour the rosette is or what colour the sleeve is. They just want someone to grab them and pull them out of that mire. I'm absolutely confident that all the staff within Angus council, children and learning and our children and families teams will continue to provide the ongoing love, care and compassion that we will all need to help us reach those better days ahead. Thank you, Provost.
Thank you very much. Councillor Speed, again, within the three minutes. Well done. Questions?
Provost, councillors Divine and Fairweather have indicated that they wish to speak. I'm not sure of questions at this stage, Provost.
Councillor Divine.
Thank you, Provost. I do have a question, but I would just like to echo councillor Wan and councillor Speed's words of thanks to Kelly McIntosh, our team and to Catherine as well for bringing together this paper under very difficult and continually changing circumstances, I think from the government down. It has been some movable feast this over the last four months. I want to thank all the teachers for their exemplary work because they have been planning for several eventualities or contingencies. And I'm convinced, having spoken with a couple of head teachers, that they will be welcoming back the young people, not only safely, but with the love, care and fun that they really need. For some children though, of course, this could be a particularly difficult transition. So I'm very pleased to support the extension of the temporary contract for both teachers and support staff. And I'm so pleased to see that we do have four extra social workers who will absolutely be required for the most vulnerable of our children, which could be and will be, I'm sure, very challenging circumstances for them. So I wish everybody all the best in August when they come back. That is good news, at least for the transport, that should help our costs somewhat. My question is on page seven, 4.2. It was mentioned by councillor Wan that we voted through £180,000 for holiday fun and food at the budget. It's been superseded by the £240,000 from the Scottish government. So I'm just wondering how you foresee using this extra money? Will it be for cleaning? Will it be off or in what way will it be used?
Councillor Wan.
I think if you bring Kelly McIntosh, director of education in on that one, please.
Thank you. First of all, can I thank everybody for the very kind words about my team and Catherine's team. It really is appreciated and I'll make sure that the staff in our schools receive that message. With regards to holiday food and fun fund, the £180,000 was for the whole year. And whilst we may not have been able to provide the activities and the food together during the summer due to current physical distance and the guidance from the government, we are continuing to provide food vouchers for families most in need at this time. And our parental engagement officers continue to work with our colleagues and communities and third sector to look at the provision of activities and food based activities during the forthcoming school holidays throughout the year. We have not at this time repurposed any of that money to try to offset additional costs.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Divine, are you happy with that answer?
Well, yeah, I mean, at the moment, I think it would be difficult to repurpose it probably. But I just wondered, there is that bit extra which could be helpful, I'm sure.
Okay. Councillor Fairweather.
Thank you. Thank you, Provost. Where do I start with this? Can I thank our convenor and our vice convenor and the words of councillor Divine as well? A huge thank you. So it's not a question, it is a comment right, so I hope you don't mind. But it's a huge, huge thank you to Kelly McIntosh and her team. Certainly, Kelly, when you came into this job, I bet you didn't think you would be going through the last four months. It's certainly not been easy for being you at this present time. You had a difficult last report for the special arrangements committee and a very difficult report again to bring forward for today. Knowing of course that things can change in a flash and as councillor Wan has reiterated this morning, things have changed and I would say probably for the good. So it's well done to all of you. You've worked tremendously hard in the last few months and we are indebted to you. Can I say that I've also spoken to a teacher who's worked in the hub? And you know, she says it's been difficult, it's been hard, but she's thoroughly enjoyed every minute. And all I can say is such is the dedication of our staff. So please pass on our kind regards, Kelly, to all your staff and all who's involved. Thank you.
Mrs McCosgrove, who was your next question?
We have a number of members wishing to speak and the order I have here is councillor Davy, then councillor Hans, councillor Brayce, councillor Cheep and then councillor Moore.
Thank you very much. Councillor Davy.
Thank you, Provost. It was a question I would like to make comment later on for the offices. And it's just regarding the released advice on on school transport is my understanding is that face coverings will not be required on the school bus as per guidance. And this to me does seem a bit strange that pupils on the public bus would have to wear a face covering. On the school bus, they would not have to. And if face coverings are primarily there to protect others from you passing on the infection. And we know that young people are particularly likely not to show any symptoms of the virus and that these masks are being encouraged to be worn in enclosed spaces. It does seem strange and we've also seen a much higher death rate of public facing workers such as bus drivers. So I'm just wondering if this is something that we can discuss in Angus or whether it's a guidance as a whole? Because it does seem strange to me that face coverings would not be required on the school bus when we could potentially help protect pupils and the driver.
Okay, Mrs McIntosh, it was key. I mean, I think you can answer the question in as much as you said that younger folk are less likely to pass the virus on, but Mrs McIntosh, would you be able to answer that?
Yeah, if I can just reiterate to members that the guidance was not issued today until 10 o'clock. So myself and my officers have had a very cursory look at it. And it is an advisory note and will be part of full guidance that we hope is issued by Scottish government prior to the 30th of July. We also have to remember that there is a distinction between school transport and public transport. So whilst we are much more in control of what happens on school transport, we are less in control of what happens on public transport and will have to liaise with our colleagues who provide public transport and also colleagues in neighbouring local authorities who utilise public transport much more than we do to try and get a common approach. It is correct, the government, the advisory note today, when you read it together with the physical distance and advisory note is suggesting that transport is simply an extension of the school setting. And as we are not expecting children to be physically distanced or wear face coverings in school, so we will not be requiring that on public, on school transport unless of course children have particular additional support needs that would require that. The guidance does mention the use of face coverings on transport by adults, including drivers, and does recognise that these workers who are on transport or assisting with others with transport with additional support needs are in the more at risk category. But I suppose fully what I would say is until we have had time to go through the guidance and liaise with our transport providers, both for school transport and public transport, and then have the final guidance from the government, we don't really know the answer.
Okay, councillor Davy.
Yeah, thank you very much for that answer. I suppose it's, I'd appreciate the information being passed on as soon as you become aware of it.
Okay, and your next speaker, please. Councillor Brayce.
Councillor Hans, Provost.
Beg your pardon. Councillor Hans.
Yeah, and thank you, Provost. My question is actually very similar to councillor Davy. However, what I'm also thinking is given that the reliance that we have on so many children being bussed in, if there was to be a pupil at school that developed COVID symptoms and had a positive test, I wonder what the scope of that test would be? Would it just be class members? Or would it be people on the bus as well that would have to self-isolate? My concern is if there isn't any face covering to be worn on public transport, potentially the possibility of a whole bus having to self-isolate and just be talking all at once so it could be even quite disruptive. I could have just also said that I would also like to echo the sentiments of other members in front of children learning and children and family services staff.
Thank you very much, councillor Hans. I think a lot of what you're asking there is not really maybe within our knowledge and that will come down to the Scottish government. But again, I could have just asked Mrs McIntosh to maybe just reiterate maybe what you said previously.
I would have to say that I didn't hear all of it. Councillor Hans was quite broken up when she was speaking, but I did catch some of it. So I'll try and cover the parts that I'd heard. With regards to children who develop symptoms in school, the advice is that they will not be allowed to travel even home on that public transport and we will have to provide an alternative. I think councillor Hans also asked about children who may develop symptoms or members of their family may and who may find themselves having to self-isolate and so not travel to school and not be at school. And whilst we are not in control of public health guidance on what will happen with the test and protect and isolate message or the increased surveillance and testing in schools at the moment, that will be part of the updated guidance at the end of the month. What we will be able to do is continue to provide learning for any children who have to remain at home, whether that's because they continue to shield or whether that's because of during the course of the year, they are forced to self-isolate. And we will have dedicated support for learning for children who are at home.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hans, yeah, happy with you?
Yeah, I think we just need clarity on how close that test and protect goes in terms of physical through the class. Does it go through the school bus and how regularly is that likely to be?
I'm afraid we don't have those answers at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Hans, thanks again. Mrs McIntosh. Councillor Brayce.
Yes, thank you, Provost. Yes, I do would like to thank the officers for all the huge amount of work and contingency planning, a lot of which we hope we'll never see the fruit of. But we might well do, especially if we have a second wave of COVID, probably in the winter if it's to come. And that's really what my question is about. On school transport, obviously we've done a lot of work on getting some kind of a solution, some kind of a contingency in place, which we won't need at the moment. But we might well do in the future and I do have concerns about how we might have to get a lot of pupils to school. I'm particularly thinking of Little Brechen here, but every councillor I'm sure will have similar areas. You know, the prospects of children walking in from Little Brechen into Brechen on a winter's night in the rain with no pavement and no street lighting really make my blood run cold. And so I hope that the transport people, Mr Lee and his staff will continue to try and bolster contingency plans for school transport in case we do need them. I have another question too. And that's about social work. I think at 5.7 on page 12, I'm wondering, do we have access to enough social workers? Are there enough in the country to go around to meet everyone's needs?
Mrs McIntosh, would you be able to answer some of that?
I would like to ask Alan Hope, he's here today representing Catherine Lindsay and Alan.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Yes, is the short answer. We have a graduate recruitment scheme. We interviewed a number of candidates only a few weeks ago. Our intention would be to pull the four new social workers from that group. And these are all people who have completed placements in Angus council, so they know the system, they know how we operate and they're all keen to work for the council as well. So in short, yes.
Thank you. How are you, councillor Brayce?
Yes, that's my back.
And your point about walking through Little Brechen, probably like you and I did when we were kids, has been noted. Okay.
Not less traffic then, Provost.
The next question from councillor Cheep. Councillor Cheep, have you unmuted yourself, please?
There we go. Thanks, Provost. First of all, I'd like to really thank the relevant council officers for the thoroughness of the papers presented to us today. Again, a thorough read and well covered, so thanks for that. Also, it goes without saying, we should applaud the efforts of all teaching and support staff and that they've been over the last few months as well, which has been quite extraordinary all round Angus. My question, I've got a couple of questions really and it refers to, I think, Mrs McIntosh in one of the papers on the PPE we're discussing and saying, I think there was, sorry, the papers aren't in front of me now, but I think we had £70,000 being allocated to PPE across the schools. And then on the basis that the children will be wearing face coverings, obviously. I'm just wondering what, how that 70K intended to be spent? And also bearing in mind all the children, the teachers are clearly going to have to imagine appropriately social distance. And my concern is that's fine in our normal circumstances. But if, as in many schools, we have a significant additional support needs requirements where, to be frank, children can kick off and may need more than one adult involved there, how do we expect or what appropriate PPE should we provide for these circumstances? That's the first question. I could maybe come up with a supplementary if you'd want to answer that one first.
Mrs McIntosh.
Yeah, with regards to the use of face coverings by staff in school, current guidance is that they are not required unless staff are within close proximity to someone that they are working with for 15 minutes or more. And that advice is directed at staff who work with children with additional support needs with specific conditions where they may have to give very close support. So face coverings will be required in those incidences and we will risk assess the work of each individual member of staff who works with children with additional support needs and make sure that the correct PPE is given. I'm going to ask Beth Reader to outline exactly the cost, the £70,000. I'm going to ask Beth Reader to outline exactly the cost, the £70,000 and what it has been spent on to our schools to open up in August.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, thank you Councillor Cheep. So the £70,000 noted in the report is to ensure that schools have a provision of general PPE and sanitation items that they need to begin term safely in August. So that includes provision of hand sanitizers, both portable bottles and fixed units at entrance points in accordance with all of the Government and Health Protection Scotland guidance. We're ensuring that schools all have sufficient stocks of general PPE that's required determined by risk assessments. That includes portable aprons, rubber gloves, masks if required, again, all determined by the risk assessment. We also have a need to provide clear signage for visitors, for children and for staff. This includes using Macaton signage for children with additional support needs. So it's, that's the general provision of supplies and it's to ensure that the schools when they open in August, regardless of the model, have all that they need to stay operating.
Okay, thank you. How about that, Councillor Cheep?
Yes, thanks Provost.
A supplementary?
Yeah, it was, it was another part of the report. It's just, and Councillor Wan referred to on cleaning and the additional cleaning costs. I know he's looking for information through from TESI contracts, but the funding of the cleaning, additional cleaning, because the cleaning clearly will be a significant additional spend as it is for all businesses, never mind the public sector at the moment. But so just wondering where the funding for that is to come from? Is that, do they expect that to be from Scottish Government or from where do we have to fund that ourselves?
Mrs McIntosh, can you answer that?
Yeah, if I can just reiterate our position with the cleaning and being unable to indicate costs at the moment. And TESI contracts has provided us with three cleaning specifications and we have indicated which we would require based on the guidance that we were planning for going by part time in August. And as we will receive an updated guidance, this is one of the reasons that we can't provide costs at the moment. We know that the guidance is going to be updated, so we have to meet again with TESI contracts and decide whether the spec that we had chosen already is still going to be sufficient and then that will have to be costed out. It will of course result in increased costs from August onwards. We do expect actually that the cost from when we closed our schools may result in our bill from that point until the end of term being a little bit less, so that could offset some of the cost. And we are awaiting further guidance from Scottish Government on the £100 million pounds that was announced on the 23rd of June. And at a Saturday meeting this morning, I was advised that £50 million of that will be for staffing and no further advice has been received yet on what the other £50 million pounds will be for or how it will be in defence. And as of yet, we do not have any indication of how much of that fund Angus Council will be allocated. But I would hope that there is provision in that additional money from the government to help us cover the additional costs of cleaning.
Thank you very much, Mrs McIntosh. Councillor Cheep, are you happy on that?
Yes, thanks Provost. I think it's just maybe something, just picking up on what Mrs McIntosh said there, that maybe councillor Fairweather with COSLA could go back through COSLA to propose that, that we are seeking funding to support what will clearly be costs of increased costing, costs for increased cleaning as part of that. It's a good direction for us all maybe to put uniform support across the councils back to the Scottish Government on that issue.
Yeah, thanks very much, Councillor Cheep. And I'm sure councillor Fairweather's got that very much on hand.
Great.
Thank you. Councillor Moore.
Thank you Provost. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're loud here, but we can hear you.
Wonderful. I have two questions. One is on page 28, where it states teachers will be responsible for ensuring all learners can access learning at home through either digital or non-digital platforms. Now, I have a great respect for teachers, son of a teacher, I went through the education process, didn't do much good, but you know, it's, why is this responsibility falling down on teachers? Should it not be falling on the education authority? Because the pupils are outside the school, the teacher can't go around to the houses. So I'm just wondering why the teachers who have done a magnificent job and are very heavily burdened with this have to take that responsibility? And the other question about the bubbles, to avoid cross-contamination, we have pupils taught in bubbles, but how are we going to address different age siblings who will obviously be in different bubbles, go home, spread the virus to each other and then come back and put it into the bubbles?
Mrs McIntosh, maybe part of that bubble?
If I can just address the first question, I think it is important to point out that our local phase and delivery plan is now our contingency plan. So Scottish Government are suggesting a full-time return in August and this plan was for a part-time return. Irrespective of that, the point about teachers being responsible for ensuring all learners can access learning at home through the digital or non-digital platforms, our teachers are responsible for every child in their class and the learning of every child in their class. And we have to get away from the notion that your class is simply always in a building that is a school. Some of our children learn at college, some of our children already learned remotely through a college platform or through Glow in the way that they have more so since our schools have been closed. This relates to teachers making sure that every child in their class can either access the digital learning through Glow and if the teacher knows that they cannot, that the teacher provides paper copies of work. That is a teacher's responsibility and that will continue to be so when we return full time for any children who do not manage to return to school or if we return to a part-time model. This will of course now be helped by the part in the report that indicates that we now have the Scottish Government grant for digital devices. So we should be in a position where every single one of our children and young people have access to a device which allows them to learn from wherever they are if they cannot be in school. Thank you. I've forgotten what the second question was, I'm sorry.
Good question again, Mr Councillor.
About bubble, I'm there. I would advise about the use of bubbles is taken from Scottish Government advice about the use of bubbles in our early learning settings and the lower primary settings. So we have followed that advice. But again, that was based on a part-time return. Current government advice and that advice we noticed today is that physical distancing is not required for schoolchildren at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you happy, Councillor Moore?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr McCaskill, any other questions or comments?
Yes, we could, councillor Whiteside, Laurie and Bell.
Councillor Whiteside, on you go.
Thank you, and thanks also to Kelly and Catherine and all the people involved. It must have been a mammoth task and not only that, it's a continually changing picture. So reports have been produced and then the information is superseding what you're working with. So well done. It's obviously going to be like that for some time to come. The guidance today on the school transport must have been welcome and appreciate you've not had time to look at it in any detail, but particularly, make things particularly easy in areas like Moneyfeath and Sidlo where there's a lot of school transport involved. I'm just wondering if you're still anticipating having to do some parent contracts for more vulnerable children?
So the situation we have at the moment is that since we closed our schools and government advice has been changing, we have had parents contact us saying, I wouldn't want my child to use the school transport and other than that myself. And some of those safe parents have then come back and said, no, I do want them to use the transport now. And the situation that we were in when we wrote this paper was that we knew that we would perhaps not be able to transport all children who were entitled to transport and were looking to contact parents to see if they would transport those children themselves. With the advice that's been issued today, that is going to be much less of an issue, but still maybe an issue on the school runs which involve children from different primary schools and perhaps a secondary school sharing the same transport. They referred councillor Wan to say that that's one of the things that's listed in the new guidance is that that should be avoided. So whilst I think the issues about not being able to transport all entitled children are less, until we model that new ask of the government, bearing in mind that we're going to try and keep children accessing different schools on separate transport, we may still have to approach some parents.
Okay, Councillor Whiteside?
Yeah, that's great, thanks. And also meant to say, it was really reassuring to hear Alan Hope's response about the social workers coming through the graduate training programme, so that's good news.
Councillor Laurie?
Yep, thanks Provost. I think my questions have been answered at this stage, so just a comment really. Many pupils of Moneyfeath High need to get the bus to get to school, so it's welcome to hear that we've got these transport arrangements in place. And I thank our education team and staff for their hard work and preparation. There are a lot of costs involved and it's my sincere hope that the Scottish Government will be forthcoming with additional funding and clear and prompt guidance around the practicalities of this to help us deliver and maintain these arrangements moving forward. And that's one comment from me.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bell?
Thank you Provost. And again, I'm sure every single one of us is hugely grateful for all the work of your team, Kelly and Catherine's. And I was really pleased to hear you mention the third sector and I'm really hopeful that our partnership with the third sector can continue to support those children and families moving back into the school environment. I've had some amazing feedback from local parents and pupils around how well supported they felt by the school team. And I'm particularly anxious, I guess, about young people who might have been struggling at school already, to be at school and were maybe in school part-time and how they're supported back into where they were, I guess. And I'm wondering, do we have enough capacity within our educational psychology colleagues? And I guess also the Child and Adolescent Mental Health Service, which traditionally has quite significant waiting time. I'm just worried about that knock-on effect and might the third sector be in a position to help support children and young people throughout that time of significant uncertainty?
Mrs McIntosh?
Yeah, thanks for your question. I'd just like to reiterate to all of the elected members that a full-time return to school in August is not going to be about, oh my God, what about all the work we've missed and we need to catch it up primarily. Primarily, we will be looking to ensure the health and wellbeing of all of our children and young people and of our staff. People have been away and we do not know what it's been like for them to live under the current conditions. We do not, we do not know what it's been like in their home and that applies for our children and our staff. So our focus will very much be on our health and wellbeing in the first few weeks. I believe that we do have the staff in our schools who know our children and families well enough to be able to understand what the challenge has been for these families and put in appropriate help and support. Our educational psychology team have continued to work throughout the summer. They've been supporting staff and young people and families and they will be part of something that we are designing at the moment, myself and Jim Hammond and Lorraine Wilk, who is coming in as a seconded service leader into our service. We are designing something that is going to use the additional staff that we're hoping you're going to allow us to have for a year, the additional support staff and the help of the new social workers, our colleagues and communities in the third sector where appropriate, to try and get the support to our families who need it, to individual young children and groups of young children who need to be helped initially with their health and wellbeing and then moving on to ensure that their literacy and numeracy learning hasn't been lost too much. And I can't really give a comment on what CAMHS may be able to offer at present, but please be assured that we will work collectively to ensure that our families are supported. And with regards to those who perhaps found it difficult to attend school before lockdown or who have attended part-time, I think what lockdown has shown us is that we have managed to grow other ways of reaching children who cannot attend school for whatever reason. And we will definitely build on being able to provide learning for children who are at home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs McIntosh. Councillor Bell, are you happy with that very detailed answer?
Absolutely, and I think it was really important to help tease that out, to give people that reassurance and I'm really pleased to hear it. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr McCaskill, any others?
Yes, councillor Starke.
Thank you Provost. I just have a few comments and a little question at the end, but I would like to echo the sentiments that everybody has expressed regarding the work put in by all the officers etcetera over the last four months. It must have been really difficult. And I welcome the news about the transport as well. And I also like, I liked the comment just made upon health and wellbeing and the catch-up on the education, which I think is an important point as well. And it was good to see that Bruce Adamson, the Children's Commissioner, he has grave concerns about the long-term impact of lockdown. So it's something that needs to really be looked at and I thank councillor Speed for her comments on this regard. I just have one other thing. I know we are in a sort of in a developing situation and the plans etcetera are always made on the current advice. So with the local phasing delivery plan, can you advise us to where we are in this regard, especially with union and the teachers and the thoughts regarding the plan itself?
Yes, so our local phase and delivery plan, when we were writing this, we shared it with teaching unions and non-teaching unions. And at the same time, it's important to say that we were sharing all of our guidance, including guidance on risk assessments and safety in schools with teaching and non-teaching unions. And none of the unions commented on this actual plan. I think what is perhaps most important is that with us planning now for a full-time return in August, I think it's important to recognise that there is some national discord between teaching unions and the advisory note suggesting that all pupils will not physically distance. They are raising questions about pupils in senior phase and that is reiterated in the advisory note today. So we will await further guidance on that. I've been in contact with my teaching union representatives this morning. They're obviously not at the meeting today and they have not heard anything from members since we closed our schools for the summer holidays. There are no issues coming up, but I would anticipate that with new guidance being published today and full guidance being published at the end of July, that some members of staff will raise questions. I would like to reiterate that our relationship with our teaching unions is very strong. They are part of all of the decision-making that we make and we have now got non-teaching unions involved in our decision-making too. We really wish to consult with people. We do welcome their opinion and we include that in the work that we do.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mrs McIntosh. Any other comments or questions, Mr McCaskill?
Yes, Provost, I think councillor Darno has indicated that she wishes to speak.
Okay, councillor Darno.
Hi, I'd just like to thank everybody as well. I mean, it seems like everything seems to be in place and it's been well thought out and the team have really put a lot of work into this. My only concern is with the young tots going to school, some of them will only be four and a half when they go to school. It's always very anxious for new wee ones to go to school anyway. And I wondered if there's anything put in place to make things easier for them to understand because on television yesterday it showed some private nurseries and the mothers handing the wee ones over to nursery nurses who are in full PP with the mask etcetera and it looked quite daunting because you sort of relate to that to hospitals, to dentists etcetera. And I wondered if maybe using visors or maybe doing a little video or something before they go to school because having got this usual transitional period between nursery and school because they've been off such a long time, that's the only thing I'd like to ask Kelly if there's anything being put in place for the new ones going to school.
Mrs McIntosh?
Yeah, so the government allowed us to open our schools in June, in the last two weeks of June, specifically for transition. of June, specifically for transition arrangements and all of our schools did open and those entering P1 were invited in for transition so that they could see the space and meet with staff. Similarly, there was paperwork completed by families and parents who met with staff to go over the paperwork. So just the normal transition stuff that we would do, we tried to do, we offered it to families. I don't have the figures in front of me for how many families took that offer up, but the offer was there. I think what is really important for us to stress is that our staff will not be wearing full PPE and that our staff will not actually even be wearing face coverings unless that is required because of the condition of a child or a young person that they work with. And it will be no physical distancing for children, still two metres for staff unless they have to be within close proximity.
Thank you very much, Mrs McIntosh. Councillor Darno, are you happy with that?
That's great to know because I know some parents are really anxious at leaving new pupils, they're standing at the gate and everything, so this will maybe make them less concerned about leaving the children.
Yeah. Okay, Mr McCaskill, any others?
No other speakers, Provost.
Okay, thank you very much. Colleagues, I, no more questions, no more comments. I would just like to thank Mrs McIntosh before I ask councillor Wan to sum up, but I'd just like to thank Mrs McIntosh for all the answers that she gave, which were very full and detailed. And my gosh, I would not like your job well done. I think on behalf of us all, I think you did a great job there. Councillor Wan, would you like to sum up, please?
Thank you, Provost. Just a very quick sum up, but from the answers that Kelly has provided to everybody today, you can see that it's not an easy task that we've been asked to work on. It's harder by the fact that the guidance changes, sometimes even daily, but we can appreciate that's going to happen just to the pure nature of the pandemic. I appreciate all the questions from my colleagues today and I hope you're now satisfied that the team are all working as fast as possible to ensure a smoother turn to school for our pupils and staff. By no means is the transport issue any easier. We have still a lot of configurations to work out and we will expect some costs incurred and ask of the council to fund at a later stage. But I'm delighted that all my colleagues today are supporting this work by the Education Department and thanks for your agreement. Thank you.
Colleagues, are we, the report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Right, colleagues, that's the meeting finished and we look forward to seeing you.